Okay, we are ready to start the public hearing. Excuse me, I'm at RTFA for 88 Marion Street. So, anyone involved with that would could please come in. Hopefully, we can limit this presentation to a half an hour. I'm always an optimist.
Less is more.
If we can, your presentation could be like fifteen, twenty minutes, and then we'd give us ten or fifteen minutes for questions and comments. Oh, let's start.
Mike Louboutin from Marion Associates. I'm here tonight with Jeff Toma, landscape architect, engineering director of the building architects and the applicant, Larry Rogers and the company. Here to present 88 Marion Street. 88 Marion Street is here, located across from the intersection of Sunset and Marion. It's an undeveloped lot at this time. It's got a directed butter, 78 Marion. And these are the closest of butters across the street. Essentially, it is a wooded lot. It's on here in the green. Couple of site features to point out. We've got the remnants of what's called a stone foundation. If you're coughing sidewalk, it's this five to six foot straight drop. Looks like that. From one of the butters, it said it was a possible old garage. There is an existing walking path that goes across the front of the lot. And there's also an existing access pedestrian at the time, but this time to Marion Street as well. The overall topo, there's a slight high point in the front, in the middle, and sheets to the front and to the back. Soil testing was done on two different occasions, some in the rear and some in the front, to establish areas for septic. And based on the initial sidewalk, we ended up, after a couple of proposals, we ended up placing the house, as you see here. It's approximately 130 feet or so back from Marion Street. Fairly well centered, in the middle of the lot. We went ahead and utilized the existing pedestrian access. We widened it to one side for the driveway access from Marion Street. And we did speak with Robert Hoffman, DPW, and they were okay with that. He saw no reason as to not use this as our vehicle access, since there is pedestrian access to this also, to itself as well. That allowed us to wind the driveway up and around, trying to avoid as much of the existing vegetation as we could. We went with a side load garage for a couple of reasons. One, since the only directed butter is on this side, we felt that having to drive on this side to avoid any kind of light filtering over there or noise, this existing walking path, in theory, there shouldn't be too many people bothered by it at night with the lights coming off of the garage. It also just felt that it flowed better and allowed us to really screen the front of the house from the road. The septic, we located in the back. We felt that we were going to have a usable yard in the back anyway, so we went ahead and put the septic there. These test bits allowed to put the system underground long enough. In order to have just minor grading and breakout to here, which also allows us to keep a limited work and a limited lawn closer to the house. There's two infiltration subsurface infiltration systems shown in blue. This one will collect the majority of the entire roof with some of the driveway runoff. And the remainder of the driveway runoff will be collected from these small gardens and infiltrated into the systems here. The vegetation, the reasoning for this location and replacement, we really wanted to try to maintain a lot of the front screening and side. And I know that the path in particular was one of the main concerns. And I'll let Jeff speak a little more in detail of what we chose for landscaping. Glad you guys will be with Jeff.
Sure. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Toma. I'm a landscape architect for the project. I work with Marion Associates as well. And I think one of the main goals behind the site plan and the landscape plan was to preserve as much of the existing vegetation as possible on site. That being said, Mike said before, there's about 130 feet of distance between the front property line and the street. But there's some great, you know, mixed white pine and hardwood forest here that we can use for a buffer from Marion Street to the existing house. I think we also look to protect and preserve some of the existing saplings and understory growth that you see along Marion Street in the low part of the property. And that existing native vegetation that you can see here in these light green outlines, choke cherry, white pine saplings, that's going to provide some additional propering from the views of Marion Street back toward the property. We also did some extensive sidewalks before we developed these. And we specifically want to protect and preserve significant hardwood trees that were on site. There's a lot of white pines, but there's a couple of mature oaks that we worked to preserve. There's a 36 inch oak here and a 24 inch oak there. And we sited the house and did the site work to make sure that we could maintain and preserve those two trees. That being said, part of the landscape goal or the site plan in general was to minimize the amount of manicured lawn as well. And in doing so, we planted the edge of the woodlands with a native warm season grass seed mixture. And that will be moved once or twice a year. It'll provide a great resource for the existing wildlife and a nice transition from the manicured landscape to the native landscape. As you look at the site, we also provided a very simple foundation planting to soften the architecture that has seasonal interest. You know, it's a mixture of inkberry holly and Ilex crinato or Japanese holly with some other ornamental plants like viburnum calicii or Korean spice viburnum and some flowering trees. Additionally, there's some other landscape features that you should take note of. There's a cobblestone apron at the end of the driveway. We thought that was a nice separation between the public walkway that exists here and the private drive. It's going to give a visual cue to people that are using the walkway there as to where, you know, the private residence starts. And there's also a unit pavement walkway, concrete unit pavement walkway, from the driveway to the front of the house. That being said, we also worked on a lighting plan, a very minimal lighting plan. There's a couple of post lights, post op lights here, standard post op light. One at the juncture of the walkway and the driveway here, one down at the beginning of the drive. I believe there's several pathway lights along the walkway to the front door. And then there's a series of sconces and pendant lights that we worked with, or the architect worked to detail that went specifically with the architecture.
So who's going to talk about that?
I think...
I think that now I'll probably wait until he's finished.
If you have it, yeah, no, the architect will be glad to describe the lighting plan for the architecture. I think some of the trees that we used in the buffer planting, those are Western red cedar and Fraser fir. Those are combined with a mixture of understory shrubs like double file viburnum, rosemary rhododendron, and royal azalea. Those provide additional screening from the woodland pathway that exists here to screen views to the house. This is supplemental planting. We added it after our sidewalk, we did a sidewalk with the neighborhood and a bunch of you all from the board. And these trees were added. Originally, we only had the understory planting, but we added 12 evergreen conifers to really try and supplement that and screen that view from this existing conservation path towards the house. Additionally, all along, the plan had the same series of Fraser fir and Western red cedar along the driveway that sort of winds its way up to the site instead of providing a straight view from the road back to the house. We're using the planting to screen the view back to the house. And again, it's the same mixture of evergreen conifers and understory shrubs to help supplement.
So what is the fixture again?
It's Fraser fir, Western red cedar for the conifers. You might know that Joe's received an email from, I think we've had discussions with the landscape consultant, Kim Turner. And she has suggested some alternate species. We're perfectly happy using Serbian spruce as she recommended, or hemlock. We'll switch out those species that she requested.
Just so that we can keep this conversation just together. Kim had sent me some notes for tonight, so she said, 88 Marion, the plan I saw earlier this week showed many arborvitae in the buffer to the trail. And at the front, I asked the applicant to switch out some of the arborvitae for larger species such as limber pine or Serbian spruce or hemlock. They have not made the change yet. I think a minimum of 30 to 40 percent should be changed. They can use fewer larger trees, say two hemlock, spruce, pine for every three to four arborvitae shown on the plan for the sake of space. Rest of the plan looks good to her.
So, we agree we're fine with changing the plant species?
Sorry, but we need to make that change at some point. So presumably, they're going to submit something and she's going to look at it and sign off on it?
I think we were hoping that it would be a condition of, if we were granted approval, Kim said that that might be an option for us. Whatever the board recommends.
Hemlock will need to be maintained and sprayed for royal.
If we, I don't think we, she said just did hemlock as an alternative, but I think if we do use it, that we'll agree to spray it. But we'd like to use the Serbian spruce and the limber pine, as she suggested, so that we could avoid a chemical treatment plan. I think that would be a wiser course of action, actually.
Okay.
If there aren't any other questions?
We're at the landscape place. Go ahead and do your architecture.
I have a question about the landscape.
I'm sure.
In the area where you have the restoration seed mix around the perimeter, I noticed that you're removing trees within that area as well. Is that because they're white pines or?
The majority of the trees on site are white pines. But the trees are being removed primarily to accommodate the grading and the septic system and stormwater retention systems in the development of the sites that we could place the house in.
Even the ones in the restoration seed mix around the perimeter?
Even the ones, yes. You know, we didn't take down any more trees than we needed to. Obviously, we're trying to keep as many as possible. I think there was one question that Mike and Joe were talking about, maybe reducing a little basin in the back. But at this point in time, that shallow stormwater basin exists.
All right. Well, I don't know, where did that wind up, that discussion?
The, well, basically, as Mike will tell you, so Jeff, that back corner, there's like a little depression. If the board thought it was important to bring that in, it could be brought in and they would just change the stormwater strategy.
The theory behind this one is instead of going subsurface and having to deal with doing all that construction, that slight depression was all we needed for rate. The volume of water was not the issue, it was just the rate, it was just strictly to slow the water down a little bit. We felt like we were going to be, because of the septic breakout, we were going into this area anyway. So we felt that we would utilize two uses for the same area. David suggested that maybe we take a little look at it. We could, of course, go subsurface, but again, it was, you know, obviously costly.
That's the, like, back corner, I don't know, like, you know, like, that, it could, so it could be pulled in, but I don't know what value you see in that. So I didn't say, okay, definitely do it.
Yeah, it was a discussion that he had with myself and me.
You know, it's more like how you hear about it. I don't think, what would be, say, like, one tree or something, or two trees?
Maybe two.
Only two.
Only two, you know, so.
One of which is probably having made, so it's really just one arborvitae.
Doesn't really change the plan, but if you wanted to do it, they can do it.
Okay.
You know, the plan should change the plan.
My name's Adrian Lear. I'm with Marion Associates Architects with Architecture. I know the one question came up with the side lighting, just wanted to go over what was on the building. They have a pendant light over the front door. We have one sconce by the side entrance. We have two sconces flanking the doors to the garage. And there's three sconces at the back, which would light the patio and a small section of the backyard when those areas are being utilized. There are, I believe it's eight path lights as part of the landscape package, but beyond that, that's all the light that we have in the exterior of the building. No light, dark sky, all that stuff.
I'm sorry, I missed it. Total lemon count, I believe it's eight.
Total lemon is eight.
Eighty-two sixteen.
Eighty-two sixteen. And that's with the post lights, path lights, and architectural lights on the building. For the architecture of the building, it's a two couch story colonial with two car garage. When we were working on the site, we were trying very hard to keep the footprint small rather than sprawling. We built into the roof of the attic space, the same bedroom. It is a five bedroom home, has a full basement, but it is not a walkout. It's fully submerged beneath the ground. We worked with light siding to come set the house, again, as low as we could into the site. And then, kind of, working with the mass from the house to lower it as it approaches the side, especially since it faces that public pathway through the woods. And beyond that, if you have any questions, I'd go with plans, but you have that in front of you.
Could we, do you have a poll evaluation that could work?
Going this way?
Yeah.
So here are the massing of the garage. These are the dormers that sit in the garage and they're kind of built into the roof. And the main body of the house is back here. So this peak is there. The midpoint's there, and the main mass of the house is further back. And then there's a deck kind of set back off to the side near the backyard.
And is that family roof projection one story?
It is one story, yes.
Do we have writing fixture cuts? What are the wall sconces looking like?
I believe they're Hinckley. Should have been submitted in your package, but.
Yeah, and that's, I thought I had them with me like I did for the other one, but I must have left them upstairs.
So, just out of curiosity, where is the bulb? Is it behind, is it some sort of a, is it a little shade?
It's an LED, isn't it?
It's an LED, it's a dark sky bulb, these little pictures look like.
Do you have a color ring for you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's up in the housing.
Actually, is it, this is the bulb, this is the bulb. Is it in a shade? Is that what, is there a shade around the bulb?
It's frosted.
The glass is.
The glass is frosted. This is.
A lot of the LED lights, and that's where I've seen this out in the field, is that it's a traditional socket, but it's basically the surface has the light pointing down. This is just a cylinder that then, you know, there's no light emitting this way, it's just pointing it down.
Yeah, it's definitely just cut off, of course, on, but I have nothing else.
Right, so the bulb itself actually is cut off.
Could you put a regular bulb in there?
Yes, you could.
But it's a frosted, it's a frosted panel?
Yeah.
What is the ridge height?
Ridge height is at 36 feet 8 inches.
Is what?
36 feet 8 inches. I know we're close, and so I know we need to be right on the money when we build this.
And what is the natural grade height?
Natural grade? The average grade is at 910.34 feet. So I don't have.
And you've got your roof height at nine forty-seven point seven. Which is actually point seven.
All right.
You say nine ten.
Very seven.
The average is at nine ten point three four, is that what you're saying?
Okay, so it's just slightly over.
The average is at nine four seven point zero.
Four seven. But I'm just looking at this one, it says nine forty-seven point seven.
Right.
So the ridge height.
It's a little over half a foot.
Yeah. And you're looking at nine ten point five. Well, that's the rise, so the natural bridge got a little bit ugly back there.
So on their average natural grades, it's calculated at nine ten point six eight. Proposed ridge elevation is nine four seven point zero three, for a height of average natural grade of 36.35. Maybe just the architect's, because they don't match up with what they provided for their height.
Mike, we got the final.
You're really suplexed, you know.
What's the floor or ceiling height of the growth?
There's 10 foot ceilings on the first floor, and there's eight foot six.
Traditionally, what we do is we have surveyors to measure the ridge height, so there is no way you can, or a problem with that.
No, no, we've made standard requirements before this, because we're building this, but my question is, it's a small footprint. Is the 10 foot more to ceiling? Is that an absolute must and why?
From a marketing standpoint, it is. What people tend to expect these days in a house.
It does help put you into a very narrow margin for error at all.
Well, building, you know, building a variety of communities, the restrictions these days are, you know, rather stringent. And, you know, we come within a relatively small margin in terms of the maximum ridge height.
The ones that are under it, but not over it.
Right, exactly. And what we do is, you know, we get top of foundation height to make sure it matches up exactly with what's proposed. And then when the frame is erected, we measure the ridge height, just to make that really short.
The frame is like that, a couple of inches for the ridge, you know, your roof and your ridge bed. So the ridge bed was really what you're measuring.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they got it wrong from what was on the.
Planted ahead of time, it makes, it's a lot cheaper this way.
I understand.
Nobody's happy about undoing stuff.
It's a little quiet, nobody.
Yeah, no, I know, but on these, on both sheets, the other one and then this one, they have the ridge, the nine four seven point zero three, which matches their height calculation on a separate certified couch sheet. And then, this next height follows what their certified couch sheet. So I just think on the cross section, when I put it in, I just put it in wrong.
This is the symbol we just drew.
Yeah.
Dave, any comments other than the ones that you've made already?
No. The other thing is, I think it's just that the cobbles aren't at the end of the drive. Like, usually you guys have issues with cobbles, but this is a little bit different just because it's that walk, across the front. It's something, I think we suggested it.
Would you like to make any comments?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
I'm Madeline Mullin. I live at 81 Marion Street, which is across the street. And I've got a couple of questions. The first one is the height that concerns me. I understand your approach as well with marketing, because it's a smaller house, you have tallity ceilings. It appears to be larger. I live in a small house, and I understand that concept completely. But it will be the tallest house in the neighborhood. Our house at 81, I think it's 25 feet high. The other neighbors are all about 25. So with the rise, if there's any way to diminish the height, whether it's with more landscaping, I'm not quite sure how we approach it, color, it's just something to think about. On the lights, the exterior lights, I assume all of those are down facing, since we are surrounded by 150 acres of incredible conservation land.
Well, wall sconces, don't want to interrupt you, but the wall sconces, it's not the fixture itself, it's the bulb.
The bulb.
So they can take that bulb out and put a regular bulb in there.
Okay.
That worries me a little. But okay, go ahead.
Okay, that's, these are concerns. Then, the landscaping on, if we could go back to the landscaping design, I think you all said that you had added more landscaping closer to the path, which is wonderful. We greatly appreciate that. The path is heavily used, and I think from the standpoint of the future owner and for those who use the path, it would be nice to have as much landscaping as possible on several layers. You mentioned that you're going to add in the evergreens. If you could add in some lower story evergreens.
Rosemary rhododendron.
Right, that's evergreen, but the double file that loses its leaves.
Yeah, that was recommended by the landscape consultant for the town, but we understand you.
Then, speaking of the landscape consultant for the town, the arborvitae, the deer come through there and eat that up to whatever their nose height is. Just so you know that.
The town's landscape consultant has asked us to.
To put that in, so that's just something to think about.
To replace. To replace.
To replace it with arborvitae.
No.
To replace it, okay. And I think she was suggesting you replace it with hemlock.
Actually, that was one of her options, but we decided we're not going to do that. Serbian spruce, she suggested, as well as pine spexils, which we're under the pot. And those will be.
The woolly and yellow or whatever it is is throughout all of that area.
Yes, we understand.
All the trees are done.
I don't recommend using them.
Okay, hemlock is too much then. Let's see here. Fencing, I think we talked about a little bit on the sidewalk. I don't know how we approach that. If someone decides to, if the future owner decides to put up a fence because it is too much of an invasion of their privacy? I don't know how we deal with that.
Well, at the sidewalk, we said that a fence would be a disaster in that area.
So they would, the owners would have to come back for a fence?
I don't, I think we just say no to the fence.
Okay.
At least on that whole side of the site, maybe on the other side, but, or in the back, but not on the path side, because it's just trees with no understory.
Right.
So it's, it would just be.
It would be wonderful to maintain that feeling. Then, the other question I have is the intersection of the new driveway and the sidewalk. The sidewalk is public land. There are a lot of people going up and down that all day long. How wide is the driveway going to be? Obviously wider than the path that's there now. How do you keep people from going into the driveway? This is just a cobblestone we'll have to do. I don't think you want a gate there, that's the other thing, uh, a gate and pillars, a lot of people are putting those up.
I think we opted for a subtle, but, uh, and a, um, a textural, ground playing indication, that, that's where that driveway begins and the pathway starts.
And then, uh, I guess the other, since what we use now is a pathway that will become the driveway, the driveway will essentially be, will be a public path.
Correct.
Until you get to the other side of the, uh, sidewalk, is that right?
Correct.
So who's gonna, who's gonna plow that?
It's in the right, it's in the right, so the worst part is probably when you cross the right of way, you're in traffic.
Okay, so their snowplow person will...
Who's snowplow?
The new owner.
The new owner.
The new owner will plow...
Out to the street.
Essentially the sidewalk.
I would imagine, just the same way everybody does, they'll, they'll remove the snow from their driveway, from the street edge up to the...
And then the town will come through and clear the sidewalk?
Right.
Okay. I'm just thinking along the road here. Uh, then the other thing, I know you've got to chop down trees to put the house up, that's just the... And the way I counted it was probably twenty-six trees will come down where the house is located, and a house in the driveway, and about thirty trees will come down for the lawn area and the septic area. So I guess what we would ask in the neighborhood is if there's some way that, it's going to be sort of like a logging camp for a while, if there's any way that we can ameliorate that in some fashion, not do it at seven...
In terms of construction procedures.
Well, construction hours are, are set.
Okay.
Actually, in, in, by the town bylaws.
Right.
And we don't allow construction vehicles to be out parked or, or load and unload off the site. So no, no trucks parking in the street or any of the rest of it. As far as the tree removal is concerned, they're going to have to cut the trees in regular working hours.
It shouldn't take too long, I mean, it might seem like a lot of trees, but for a decent crew, they can do that in a day, two at most.
Okay, all right, it seemed like it would take longer than that.
No, I don't think so. I'll refer to our bylaws, say the construction can begin at what time, is it eight?
Seven.
Seven?
Seven to three.
Seven to three is...
Or seven to five, and then again, I think seven to one on Saturday. Which is unfortunate, but that's what we voted in.
That's right, hold on, can you remember that poll?
Yes, we won't forget.
Because we were looking for septic later. I've got a couple of questions related to...
No, I think that's it.
Okay.
That's it, thank you, thank you.
The first is, is the, is the stone wall for this driveway in the right of way?
Yes.
Why don't we have a stone wall, uh, hearing?
We will, we will need to have that as a separate proceeding.
But I don't see how we can sign off with you guys until we have that hearing.
No, um, so likewise with, we'll, we have to draft a decision, um, we are able to consolidate these on the ninth and take care of the, the stone wall first and then, um, the decision following that.
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be a strong temptation to pretty up the stone wall, which I'd like to have resisted at all costs. The other, the other thing is, part of the sidewalk is actually on their property.
Right.
Um, and is there an easement? I mean, are they gonna come, is the, are they all going to come back later and say, move the sidewalk off my property?
Well, they very well could, there's no easement in place as we, as far as we know, based on our research.
I'm a little concerned about that.
Looks like the sidewalk was put in after the law, after the law, the law was created.
Right, so I, I think just to keep that from happening, because that will, that will create a big problem. There may be a real temptation of a part of the owners to do that. I would, I would stipulate that you put an easement in there, I wouldn't be giving an easement.
There's a guide wire coming down from the telephone pole, and that's when the path goes, and the path goes around it. That guide wire is moved, and the path is moved slightly, it's off the ground, and the ground is soft.
Well, I guess clarification should be made as far as whether it is your expectation that the town moves the, um, pathway off the property line?
No, it's, um...
I just don't want it to be a shock to years from now, you know?
Well, and I don't want, I don't want to necessarily impose an easement on the property, simply because of the guide wire. I don't know who the pole belongs to, it probably belongs to Verizon or someone along those lines.
It's holding up the telephone pole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they can move the guide wire. You know, we could do something with the, uh, with the pavement and the path down there, it's something I'd be willing to do.
When you say do something, I'm not sure what, I know what you mean.
Well, to basically reposition the, uh, the walkway there, so it's off the property and maintains the full width.
Prefer to move the walkway.
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Take that under construction.
What's that?
We're trying to take that under construction, we want to take that under construction.
Yeah, but then the profit is utility pole.
Well, the profit is pulling the guide wire, as long as the utility company is willing to move that.
Yeah, once the...
I've been watching.
Yeah.
What is it, Instar?
Yeah, and then it's going to have Verizon on it, and like, they, you know, they'll just...
I don't know if you need to move the poles so much as you need to move the guide. Everybody, I think, if the people look at it, a term solution is, is there.
Sort of like they're going to answer by the ninth.
So, um...
How many are?
Um, actually, I had, I had, uh...
That's right.
Just checked, I had actually, uh, put together a legal notice for doing the scenic road for this, um, stone wall for the nineteenth, so our next meeting at nine fifteen, so...
What date, I'm sorry?
That's our next Tuesday meeting on the nineteenth.
Of the October?
November.
November, I mean?
Yeah, so two weeks. So we can, uh, we deal with the stone wall, maybe we're able to find, um, the problem is, it takes forever to try to find out if Instar can do anything.
Can we invite whoever owns the pole, Instar, whoever runs the pole, to come to the...
I'm sure they'll respond far better to the town than they will to me.
One thing that you should, you should recognize is that we can deny the opening of the stone wall.
You can't impose an easement on the property.
Okay, I, I'm not, I'm not saying we're going to, I'm saying, I'm saying that, you know, it's, it's all part of the same intersection.
Yeah, I think all we were trying to say was that we imagined that it would be in the interest of the property owner to have an easement granted the town for the sidewalk, so that if there's ever any...
I'm not going to do that.
I, I'm, I'm not saying that you have to, I'm saying that I think it was just a expectation that you might have been interested in doing that, not saying it's a requirement.
Given the fact that we've done this property, I don't see how it's my problem. Period.
Yeah. We'll have the stone wall hearing on the nineteenth.
Nineteenth, yes.
I'm less worried about, you know, the path, I mean, the path and the easement aspect and all that kind of stuff, than I am about the height.
The reason, the reason the ridge height is where it is is because we were looking to avoid sprawling the lot. We decided to go with the two-and-a-half-story column, it will meet the zone in, uh, Bylone.
I, I have a question, the first floor finished floor, it looks like it's about three feet above the finished grade, because it's nine thirteen versus nine-ten, is there any way to make it two feet above the finished grade?
Well, we could bring the grade up a bit on the foundation.
He's talking about dropping the house.
Oh, dropping the house further into the ground?
Well, I mean, how tall, how tall is your basement?
Right now, it's not too...
Well, it's pretty tall for a basement.
Well, we, we're going to finish the basement, so we specifically plan for that. I'm just questioning whether the finished floor needs to be three feet above the finished grade, or whether you could reduce that. Suppose we can take a look at dropping it?
I'd like to take a look at that, we're trying to make sure we have enough cobblestone we can now, um, enough.
You mean, you're trying to allow for windows into the basement, or...
We have a couple window wells, um, it's just mainly, it's still building up as far as the house, and just pushing up against all the site and everything, really try to keep, um, eighteen, twenty-four inches of...
It'll fit in just a couple of feet on the corner.
The, um, septic system on which you also have something to do with the first floor is placed to want to maintain enough cobble the, uh, sort of, sort of, because of the sand nature of the site, we divided separation of ground and water supposed to four, which doesn't give us a whole, a lot of playing, rid of that danger, so, it's kind of, there, there's a balance there.
And so...
It's not the only reason, I'm just saying...
You're saying the finished floor was a foot lower, but that would be a problem?
Yeah, it possibly could be, without reexamining, I can't say for sure, but it could be potentially.
Obviously, you need to reexamine, you know, before you go that route.
Well, yeah, let's, 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 we're, we're going to come back, so let's, for this way, it sounds like if this relative structure was a foot lower, people would be happier, and there's probably a couple of different ways, and it might be a couple combinations of different ways of pushing their whole thing down a little bit, trimming some, a couple inches out of each floor, or floor height, or something like that, would probably get us there. So why don't you guys look at that and, and see if this thing can get under, shave a foot off it?
We'll look at it, but if it requires a substantial redesign, we won't do it.
Thanks.
All right, um, I think we, we got the message.
You have to understand, Steve.
I understand completely, I've been doing this for seventeen years.
Okay.
All right? Good night.
We have to, um, uh, continue to the ninth at eight-thirty, so we can have these, um, any revised plans and analysis, so we can review a decision. December ninth, yeah.
December. What's the nineteen?
The stone wall?
Yes, the stone wall. It's realistically... Waylon had to move the hole, and so Bryce drove it, because that handles that near on my property, and not in the, in the town. So...
Suppose the RGS is the under...
It's on the agenda, um...
Forty, fifty-eight, ninety-two.
Yeah.
All right, well, it's close enough to six thousand.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
So, he doesn't know what we're doing with that stone wall. Well, they can come back. He says it. You know, move, move the stone wall.
I do think the town, if it's possible for me, will...
The town is responsible for it, but we should know the town hostage, I mean, just because, I mean, this could be something that the owner demands get done tomorrow, because the pole is also in town. So unless there's an easement, the town is really exposed here. They got, the owner just could say, get your sidewalk off my property tomorrow, and the town would never like to stand up. That's what worries me.
Is the town aware of this issue?
Better than, I'm, I'm dealing with it.
Yeah.
It should be. That's why I brought it up, but, but I don't know what you, you're not going to get Instar to make a change.
In a timely way, for sure.
At all, and, and meanwhile, the town's kind of purple, the town's on somebody's land. Well, they, they gotta get off tomorrow. I mean, you know, I'm not surprised at all that they're saying, I'm not going to go for an easement, because, you know, we know that we have a lot of easements with trails and stuff here. Most people, most of them are just going to say, I don't want you to think it's going to incorporate that. Uh, I'm not, I wouldn't agree with that, I, I think some people would be pretty cooperative, because you can always change an easement, you know, fifty, twenty years from now, but the whole thing is, I think it's hard not just to go like that. You get eliminated the sidewalk tomorrow. I suspect you will, I'm surprised, I'd be surprised to do that. I'll title something tomorrow.